Okay, good evening, everyone. At this time, I'd like to call the Wilmington Board of Selectmen meeting of Monday, May 23, 2016, to order. It is 7:05. We apologize that we're running about five minutes behind. All members of the board are present. At this time, I'd kindly ask that the people that are here this evening, that you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. And I would kindly ask if Selectman Kyra can lead us in this regard.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving into our second item on the agenda is the transmitting of the Treasury warrants. At this time, I'd entertain a motion for Treasury warrants 46, 46A, 47, and 47A. Do I have questions, comments, or a motion?
Motion, so moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Number Three, we are going to be discussing the approval of the minutes of December 14, 2015. Just to clarify the record up front, we have two new sitting Selectmen, Selectman Bendel and Selectman Kyra, who were not present for this particular meeting. So just want to kindly remind you of that, Beverly, when the roll call is taken for the vote. So at this time, I entertain questions, comments, or a motion for the approval of the minutes.
I would move to approve the minutes as written.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor? Okay, three, four, and two abstaining. Thank you. Okay, moving right into our seven o'clock appointment. Once again, I do apologize that we're running a few minutes behind. This appointment is with Christina Stewart, who is our Library Director, and this is with reference to an update on programs at the Wilmington Memorial Library. Good evening, Tina. Thank you for being here.
Well, I'm here this evening to give you an update on what's going to be happening at the library this summer. Of course, one of our major focus for the summer is the annual summer reading program. And this year, we're following the statewide theme, which is based sort of a fitness theme. So the children's summer reading program, the slogan is "On Your Mark, Get Set, Read." And the slogan for the teens is "Get in the Game, Read." And for the adults, it's "Exercise Your Mind." So the official summer reading program runs from June 18 through August 11. And when children sign up for the reading program, they're going to get a racetrack to log their reading. And as they go around the racetrack, they'll be able to earn, for every four hours of reading, they'll be able to earn prizes. And similar with the teens, they'll, it's going to be a bookopoly based on Monopoly. And as they go around the Monopoly board, they're also going to be able to earn raffle prizes, and then they'll be entered into a prize for a gift basket at the end of the summer. Now, for adults, we're trying to get adults to read outside their comfort zone. So we have sort of coupons that you can pick up at the library that will end up being raffle tickets. So if you've never read a graphic novel, maybe this is the summer you want to try one. Or if you're always reading biographies, maybe you want to try a mystery. Or you could attend one of the summer reading themed events during the summer. And again, those are all become raffle tickets, and you'll be entered into the raffles to win, like gift cards to Whole Foods, GNC, or Target. So it is, you know, aimed at reading but having fun. And last year, we had 780 teens, children and teens, sign up for the summer reading program. They read over 9,000 hours. So we're hoping this year to break that record. And again, just to remind parents that kids who participate in summer reading programs tend to do much better when they return to school in September. Prevents the summer slide, which is, sometimes happens. So, and this year, at the end of the summer, we're doing something different. You already have approved the use of the Swain Green. On August 11, we're going to do an end of the summer bash. And we're going, we have some, we have three food trucks that are going to be coming. Amigos Locos Tex-Mex and Firebox Barbecue Food Trucks and the Cool Cow Ice Cream Truck. We're going to have music, games, entertainment, and more. So, and all the children who participate in the summer reading program will be eligible to get a coupon for a nice, a free ice cream. So again, this is a community event. So we hope that everyone will, you know, sort of stop by that evening and, but get something from the food truck and, you know, just hang out and have some fun that evening. And I want to take this opportunity, of course, to thank our friends at the library, because we couldn't do the kinds of programming we do at the Wilmington Library without the Friends. They generously fund not only the summer reading program and the incentives and bring, you know, authors to the library and guest speakers all year round. They are, really make it possible to do what we do. So shout out to all the volunteers who work at the bookstore next door, because everything that is, all the proceeds from the bookstore do come back to the library and help support what we do. And I also want to remind people about the Townwide Yard Sale. The, we did one last year, and we already have, we have over, I think almost 35 homes now signed up. And for $15, the resident, the homeowner will get one large sign and two directional signs, lots of free advertising. And then they'll be on the map, that will have an online map for all the yard sale locations. And the deadline for the applications is June 4, and the maps will be available June 7 at the library, Town Hall, Eli's, Eastgate Liquors, and Market Basket. So again, I think, you know, this is a win-win for either buyers and sellers. And we're doing something a little different this year. We've, we're working with Savers Thrift Store, and they're going, they're willing to pick up any unsold items if the homeowner is interested in that. And then they'll give a percentage of, by weight, as a fundraiser for the Friends. So again, I think, again, a good event, and I, we're hoping, cross our fingers, that we have a nice, nice day. I'd like to just switch gears for a minute and just kind of tell you a little bit about some of the new items that patrons can borrow at the library. And I have a sample of a prototype of our new STEM kits. These STEM kits, again, these, the focus of the Friends of the Library 2015 Annual Appeal was STEM. Now STEM is a big focus now in education. Yeah, many of you know it stands for science, technology, engineering, and math. So we have 10 of these. This one is the bird one. And inside there is binoculars, there is a DVD, and there is a bird identification guide. So that we have, we're going to have 10 of these, and they're going to be ready for circulation, for borrowing, just in a few weeks. We're still putting them together. But I just wanted to give you a list of the other STEM kits, just give you an idea of what we're, what they are. We have microscopes, bugs, magnets, bridge building, electronics, Makey Makey, the human body, bird watching, which is the one I just showed you, matter, solids, liquids, and gases, and B-Bot, which is programmable robots for kids. So again, each of these will have everything in for like microscopes and magnifying glasses and books to go with, with it. So, and the Friends funded these STEM kits for the library. So we're very excited to get those ready for circulation. And then some of the other items that we have, we now are circulating two telescopes. We also have hotspots. Now, a hotspot is a little device that you can take with you to any place that doesn't have Wi-Fi, and you can be connected, as long as you're near a cellphone tower. So if you're going on vacation to a cabin, it's a good thing to, if you want to still say connect it, you could just borrow one of our hotspots. We also have travel kits. And we have them, again, they're in a vinyl tote bag, and in, they include travel guides, a DVD, and a selfie stick. And we have them for London, San Francisco, Ireland, Disney World, and London. And again, everything is packaged very conveniently for the patron to take out, and all the sort of looking is done for you. So you don't have to worry about looking on the shelf, it's all set to go. And last year, well, summer, we started circulating lawn games. So we have bocce, horseshoe, coquet, and ring toss. These were really popular last, last summer, and we assume that they'll be pretty popular again this year. We have some board games. We have Apples to Apples, Tickle to Ride, Quirkle Forbidden Island, and Settlers of Caton. So these are just some of the examples of how we're sort of, you know, meeting new needs and interests for the community and doing things a little differently than maybe in the past. You know, certainly, we, books will always be our bread and butter, but we are addressing, you know, how people learn and how people really, you know, get together as a community in many of the services that we offer now. So in closing, I really would like to invite all residents to visit the library this summer and really discover what we have to offer and make their library the place to connect with information, with reading, and their community. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Tina. I'll, I'll jump out in front here, if I may, and just wanted to express my gratitude to you once again for being here. I know when I spoke with Jeff about the agenda, he was very pleased to have you in this evening to talk about what, all that's been going on this year and what to look forward to in the summer and into the fall. I just wanted to commend you and your team for all the work that you do. I had the opportunity through this role to integrate a little bit more with the library with your strategic planning back a little while ago. And I bring that up only just to say to you that it really enlightened me just to some of the behind-the-scenes work that's done with your team to bring the suite of services and amenities that you do to the town. And I just want to reiterate some of my prior comments that I made the last time that you were here, which is that I really appreciate your messaging, your communication, and how you're trying to be a destination for all ages. And you have a certain footprint and a certain building infrastructure and a certain budget that you need to offer these things to the town of Wilmington, and you continue to evolve. And I've seen the progression in the activities and the suite of services that you're providing. So I just wanted to mention that to you publicly, that I really am pleased to see the evolution of how well the library continues to adapt to 2016 and beyond, and that's a credit to you and to your team. So I just wanted to acknowledge that and thank you once again. So I'm going to turn it over to board members here. Certainly, anyone on the board is not obligated to speak, but I'll just turn to my right. If anyone here would like to make any comments on the right side, and then I'll switch to the left side. And I do say that we have a number of people in the audience. This is not a hearing, but if anyone feels that they want to speak regarding the library, I'm not sure of the nature of some people being present, feel free to raise your hand, and I would be happy to recognize you. So I'll start to my right. Sure.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you, Mrs. Stewart, for being here. Appreciate it. Sounds like you have a lot of exciting things going on this summer, and I want to thank you for that. And certainly, this sounds like there's a little bit of something for everybody now. And I appreciate all that you and your staff do year-round, not just this summer, but I know it's a year-round effort, and I appreciate all that you do.
Thank you.
I would agree with Selectman Bendel and Selectman O'Connell. And it just sounds like a lot of fun. And with a lot of fun comes a lot of learning, and that's a good thing. And I like the idea that there's bocce in there, and I do like ice cream, too. I may come down to the event to get a coupon, so.
Okay.
But congratulations on what you're doing for the, for the town and the residents.
Anything to my left?
Yeah. Thank you, Madam Chair. It's all been said by the other three Selectmen. I know you do an outstanding job as the director at the library. You have fantastic employees and a lot of great programs for the young and the elderly. And, you know, there's a lot going on. And I do read the literature that we get in the mail and all what's happening during the summer, what happens during the winter, and it's very exciting. And thank you.
Yeah, I guess I want to say, it's a similar gratitude. Thanks to you and to the entire staff for keeping the library relevant, frankly, and being, you know, out front. The, as well as, I don't want to leap off when I say that, sincere gratitude to the Friends. I know you highlighted the Friends of the library, but really, without their volunteerism, and again, we talk about Wilmington and volunteerism and how that's synonymous in many ways, but without their volunteerism, all these innovative programs that you and your staff are implementing and rolling out really don't become possible. So I think we can't understate how grateful we are to them. I use the word innovative, you know, the hotspots and telescopes and lawn games, and I'm thinking, that's not the library that I went to when I was a kid. So I really, I commend you, recognizing that, you know, we still have a mindset, by and large, as the library of a repository for books, but it is very much so a lot more than that. And you are continuing to preach that gospel and bring that to our attention. So thank you for that. And frankly, this, this notion of fitness is, is one that rings. You know, we do the best we can to introduce the opportunity to, for our children to participate in sports and activities and games to keep their, keep their body, their physiology fit, but the fitness of the mind should never be neglected. And what's that condition that you said during the summer when you don't read?
Oh, summer slide.
Summer slide. So you said last year, you had 780 children and teens participate. I've got two teens, and so this year, you can count on at least 782 to be participants. So congratulations, and thank you very much for your continued efforts.
Thank you. Thank you, Tina. One question for you, if I may, and I'll turn it over to the audience, and obviously, Jeff, if you have anything that you want to add. Can you just remind us again what the date is for that Townwide Yard Sale date, please?
June 11.
June 11.
From 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM. I'm sorry, probably, maybe I neglected to mention that.
No, you didn't. I don't believe, I think it was more on my end that I didn't capture it down.
Yeah.
So Jeff, did you have anything at all?
I think most of it's been said. Certainly, Tina and her staff have really made the library a place for community connection. I think that may be the underlying theme here in many regards, whether it's for educational purposes or entertainment. You know, there's been different programs here, authors, even some people playing music. So it really serves a versatile role in that respect, and I just appreciate Tina's leadership and her, the personnel there that are always innovating.
Thank you. Anyone here in the audience at all here to speak on this agenda topic? Okay, hearing none? Tina, thank you once again.
Yep.
Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so moving on to our 7:15 appointment, we are running about five minutes behind. This is a request of Selectman Michael McCoy to discuss issues related to the Finance Committee Appointment Process in 2015. I'd like to just take a quick moment, just to kind of give a little bit of a backdrop in case anybody here at home is hearing this for the first time. There were some concerns that were brought up relative to Article 41 during the Wilmington Annual Town Meeting that recently just took place a couple of weeks ago. Selectman McCoy had verbalized some of his concerns and feedback relative to that article, and then in turn, at our subsequent Board of Selectmen meeting, wanted to read additional information into the record. And at the suggestion of a fellow Selectman here on this board currently, it was suggested that this be taken up as an official agenda item, and I agreed with that. Selectman and I kindly asked Selectman McCoy to please table his comments such that we could make this an agenda item if he chose to request that of the chair, in which case now is me, to put it on as an official agenda item. And the reason to do that is to make the public aware that this is going to be discussed so that we can have an open and transparent discussion. It's also to give the manager and the Town Hall staff and administration the opportunity to convey to anybody that was present for the June 22, 2015 meeting, in which case we did discuss the Finance Committee Appointment Process, the opportunity to be notified that this was going to be on the agenda so that if anyone was to be named in any sort of statements, that they would have the personal privilege of being here tonight, or if any member of the public felt that they wanted to be here to listen in on this, that things were not happening without their knowledge. Certainly, people were not obligated to be here. They were simply given a courtesy notification that this was going to be on the agenda tonight. So basically, I'm going to turn the floor over to Selectman McCoy, and then I will navigate through the meeting as the chair accordingly. Mr. McCoy?
All right. Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, let me just start off saying that this is an incorrect subject for the agenda item before us. My issue is that Selectman O'Connell and Selectman Newhouse threaten the town manager's job relative to the FinCon fiasco, period. This is just another example of Selectman O'Connell kicking up dust in order to divert attention from what the real issue is. The topic for this agenda appointment at hand should be more appropriately read, "Town Manager's Job Threatened by Two Selectmen." I'll just read this paragraph, and that's it. "I'm going to bring closure to this issue tonight. I think you summed it up best with your carefully chosen vocabulary at our last meeting. Mr. Manager and Mr. Shampoo, I used the word 'threaten.' Let's make believe that word doesn't exist. The town manager did admit that his relationship was strained with two members of the board and that he was never threatened. Mike Shampoo said that he wouldn't want to use the word 'threaten,' but rather suggested that the town manager was instead pressured by a couple of members of this board. When someone is looking for a contract change, they're typically looking for more money or another week of vacation. Town Manager Hall requested an additional eight months of pay under the category of termination. Should he suddenly be terminated? I'll let the voters and taxpayers come to their own conclusion. I did make the request of a rough draft of the minutes of the meetings between myself, Mr. Shampoo, and the town manager as the negotiation team. The town manager, who's the keeper of executive session minutes, stated to me that he did not take any minutes relative to those three meetings, but was able to supply everything else I requested of him. Town Council always stated to me, relative to executive session, that you can't state things verbatim, but you can state generalizations, which I did." And that's all I have to say about that.
Okay, so, you know, obviously, there were a few names that were mentioned in your statements. How I'd like to handle this is, it's usual and customary to give this board the opportunity to speak. So what I'd like to do is give the people that were named in your statements the right of personal privilege. Some of them are sitting here at this table, and some are sitting in the audience. And then at that point, then I will turn it over to this board, and then I'll also turn it over to the general public to see if anyone has any comments here. So out of respect for this board and the manager, I'd like to offer Selectman Shampoo the opportunity, if you'd like to speak, and then I'll turn it over to Town Manager Hall, and then I'll offer Mr. Newhouse an opportunity to speak as well.
Thank you. Yeah, you know, I've been toiling on this, obviously knowing the, that this was an agenda item since Friday, sort of mulling over how far I was wanting to delve into this issue this evening. And I'll try to stay as professional and as upright and polite as I can be, as I'm capable of, but I feel like I got to clear my chest of a few things. So with a little bit of latitude, I will hope that I can get through this. You know, this, this notion, my memory today is the same as it was two weeks ago, and it's the same as it was in June of 2015, which is to say that after I, as chair of this board, navigated the unfortunately muddy waters that, that occurred during the Finance Committee appointments of 2015, of, of spring of 2015, Mr. McCoy and I engaged in conversations with Mr. Hall in executive session to hammer out a, a pre-negotiated deal that we could bring to the rest of the Board of Selectmen for consideration in executive session. During those meetings, because things had been challenging, stressful, and I'll just leave it at that, during the Finance Committee issue or process in the early spring, it was clear to me that Mr. Hall had concerns, felt a measurable amount of maybe stress or anxiety, but I can, whatever vocabulary you want to use, it's clear that there was a sense of, of tension. And, you know, at no point ever, and, and, you know, as chairperson or as chairman of this, this committee, as Mr. McCoy knows and Judy knows as well, and I'm sure my colleagues to my right will find out in future years, there's an ample amount of direct, one-on-one communication with the town manager throughout the week, almost on a daily basis, and sometimes more than that, just about the myriad issues that are going on throughout the day and throughout the town. At no point ever did Mr. Hall confide in me or indicate to me that he felt threatened to use that word. Now, I will stipulate that Mr. McCoy said, "Let's pretend the word doesn't exist." I still maintain that Mr. Hall was aware that there was some tension and that there were concerns that Mr. Newhouse had, and I suspect that Ms. O'Connell had, about some performance issues that had occurred in spring of 2015 and perhaps before. That all being said, the way it was worked out was the way it's supposed to be worked out, in that instead of bringing it before and bringing it out here at a, at a public meeting and calling people's character into question, challenging people's integrity, potentially embarrassing folks in a public setting, Mr. Newhouse, to his credit, chose to schedule, he checked with me and, you know, said, "Mr. Chairman, I want to make you aware, I'd like to have a sit-down meeting with Mr. Hall." I said, "Of course." And I wasn't privy, I didn't, I wasn't in those meetings, but I, and I'm not even sure how many there were. But Mr. Newhouse had a meeting with Mr. Hall, at least one, if not a couple, and addressed his concerns. And I think they had the opportunity to clear the air a little bit, to come to some common level of understanding with each other, come to a common level of expectations of each other. And through that, we were able to get to a point where negotiations on a three-year contract could proceed and did proceed, and as has been documented and discussed many times in the past several months, a unanimous vote was taken to support that contract. So Mr. Hall is here and will be for the foreseeable future. So that is good government. And I want to, I want to move on that discussion, too, because I try very hard in my role here as a member of this board to govern. I believe that that's what the people of Wilmington expect us, me, to do. They don't expect us to be politicians when we're sitting at this table. We're here to govern. We work with the departments around town, we work with the town manager, and we deliberate on the issues that affect the residents of this community. Now, we're elected, so sometimes we've got to play politics. I play politics during election season, and I endorse candidates, as I see fit, who I believe will represent our constituents well and represent the people of, of the town of Wilmington. I make no apologies for that. In fact, I'm very, very proud of every candidate I've ever endorsed, and I'm proud to participate in that process. But when it comes time to sit at this table, I govern. I don't politicize. I'm very, very frustrated by this conversation. I'm frustrated that we even have to have this as an agenda item, in whatever form it is written on this, on this agenda. It shouldn't be here. This issue was taken up and addressed in spring of 2015. There were, I don't know, 20 or more meetings from that point until town meeting, where anyone who had concerns, observations, criticisms of the process that was undertaken then could have articulated them anytime along that line. The number of meetings that we had that addressed the, the warrant for the town meeting, gosh, we had at least three where we went over the entire warrant. There was the Joint Finance Committee Planning Board meeting where that, that the article in question was brought up. Never once was any articulation, was any observation made about that article or about these concerns. It wasn't brought up until cameras were on, a, an auditorium was full of people, and it was politically expeditious for one person and one person only to bring it up. And then again, at the Board of Select meeting two weeks ago, after a year, when there were ample opportunities to bring this issue up, again, it's brought up. To me, that's politics, and it has no place in the operations and the government of this board. I'm frustrated. Frankly, I find it a little bit embarrassing that this board has to have this conversation. I'd like to move on, and I'm looking forward to moving on to the important discussions. Mr. Hall is going to read communications in a few moments, and one of the first communications he's going to read is from Town Council about the Surface Transportation Board and New England Transrail at the Old and Superfund site. Now, that's real government. That's an issue that we should be wrapping our brains around and that the people of Wilmington ought to be looking at us, saying, "What are you doing to help us?" This issue tonight, I'm sorry, Wilmington, you shouldn't have to deal with this. And I'm hoping also that this issue is over this evening. That's the end of my statement for tonight.
Mr. Hall, just giving you the opportunity, you certainly don't have to say anything, but just giving you the right of personal privilege if you so choose.
You know, I think my statement at the last meeting still applies. There's no question, and I think it was probably visible during certain portions of 2015 that relations with some members of the board were strained. And I think there were some concerns about perhaps performance on my part, but at the end of the day, my understanding, to the extent that I'm aware, is that through conversations, those issues were addressed, and the relationships, to the best of my knowledge, are back on track, and I really don't have anything more to add.
Okay. So I'm just going to jump to the front here as one of the other members. I had a lot to say at the last meeting, and I, you know, I thought about restating that to people that may be picking up this meeting now, but a lot of it has been said, and I think the record stands, the media picked it up. But, you know, I just want to clarify some of the opening statements that were made by Selectman McCoy regarding the fact, issues relative to the Finance Committee Appointment Process. Article 41 was relative to some change to the town bylaw that was relative to the Finance Committee appointments. And rather than put Article 41 so that people at home would have to do a data dive to try and find out the whole elongated reiteration of Article 41, we chose to put the sum and substance of what Article 41 pertained to. So we had to call it something. We knew we needed to give it some latitude. But I will say, during the town meeting comments that Mr. McCoy made, he really didn't, in my opinion, stick germane to Article 41, which was regarding the Finance Committee appointments, because the town manager's contract and any performance feedback, really, in my opinion, isn't germane to that particular warrant article, from my standpoint, my opinion. And then also talked about supporting candidates in an election and probably a few other things. So it's kind of changing the rules, in my opinion, tonight, based on the fact that 41 was very specific about Finance Committee appointments. And I felt to the general public that it would be easier to call it that rather than Article 41 because people at home wouldn't necessarily have the Town Warrant booklet to be able to resource that information and understand publicly what we're talking about. That's one. Two, in terms of a dust-up, I extended Mr. McCoy the courtesy of having this on the agenda if he so chose to do so. He contacted me at home, asked me to put it on. That's why it's on here. This agenda topic is on here because he asked for it, so I complied with that request. And then furthermore, you know, I want to reserve the right to make additional comments, you know, relative to this. But I think that it's fair to say that when you work in these elected positions, you're going to have one-on-one discussions. My conversations with Jeff over the years have been a myriad of personal concern for our respective families regarding town-related business, talking about holidays, talking about key projects and initiatives, talking about life in general, it's run the gamut. And there are times that we have agreed to disagree. He's never been less than a gentleman to me. I've never been less than a lady to him. We've tried to maintain a friendly demeanor. We've never raised our voices at each other. We've never so much as used foul language. And we've been able to have civility and professionalism in the midst of perhaps being on opposite sides of a specific topic. And we did that privately as a means to not try and publicly embarrass either one of ourselves to each other or to the public. But I think that that's healthy and I stand by those conversations. You know, I in no way, shape, or form ever threaten the Town Manager, but I am not going to sit here publicly and say that we have always agreed on things because we simply haven't. But Mr. Shampoo is correct. We unanimously decided to vote for Jeff and I emphatically supported that recommendation to appoint him to another three years and I stand by that. So I do reserve the right to make additional comments, but I would just like to clarify to people that that's the reason why the agenda topic is written here. And one last thing I will say, to say that the word "threatened," now we can pretend that that doesn't exist. I think that's perhaps one of the most disingenuous comments to be made. You can't pretend that you basically have character-assassinated two people in a public forum and ambushed them without any ample notice. And you use words and now you're backpedaling because you have four people that basically have told you that what you're saying isn't true. And now you want to pretend, after you've basically taken my good name and a fellow colleague and a friend of mine, and you've basically train wrecked our reputation publicly and you want to backpedal and pretend that that doesn't exist, I think once again is disrespectful in poor form. We both have families, we have businesses, and we have reputations that we've worked long and hard to protect and maintain. And I take it very personal that now that you just want to change the rules again and decide that that word doesn't exist, because it does. So that's all I'm going to say about that. And at this time, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Newhouse if you'd like to exercise your right of personal privilege.
I would. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you to the members of the Board. The opportunity at least to address you in an open forum. While I find it terribly frustrating to feel compelled to be here, and quite frankly, I think it's ridiculous. I do appreciate the Board, at least if this conversation is going to happen, for it to occur when folks can have an opportunity to defend themselves. Mr. McCoy's comments earlier about the agenda item and how it's described, and I know that members of the Board have touched on it, but I don't know how anybody can sit here and take umbrage with what's printed on the agenda when it was the very article at Town Meeting that Mr. McCoy thought it was appropriate to take those shots. If this is about the Town Manager's contract, then why was it even brought up on a Town Meeting Warrant article that addresses FinCom appointments? That's so disingenuous to sit here tonight and to take umbrage with even how the agenda is set. Mr. McCoy, you're the one who set the agenda. You're the one who, after a year of sitting in those seats, that told anybody that would listen that it was the best Board you ever served on, after a year of that, and at least a couple dozen Selectmen's meetings, came after me at a Town Meeting with my seven-year-old and my wife and a client sitting with me. And talked about having to be restrained. I didn't come with a public statement then, I didn't come with a prepared statement now. But I listened, and I listened, and I, it's outrageous what you tried to use that forum for. It's outrageous that you would have the hypocrisy to try and bring this up again tonight. You know, so now tonight, it's about the Town Manager's contract. We met numerous times in executive session. We met at least twice in open session, perhaps more. We take up the Town Manager's contract, yes, in executive session, because we're bargaining at the time and that's the way you do it. But then afterwards, we come out in public and in the open. And Ms. McCoy, after those sessions in open, when it was timely, back in August of 2015, you had nothing to say about the relationship between the Town Manager and myself. You had nothing to say about the relationship of Ms. O'Connell and the Town Manager. But now, you know, on a Pearl Harbor attack at Town Meeting, you see fit to make comment. Now at a Selectmen's Meeting, when I'm not even present to defend my own reputation, you think it's appropriate to bring it up. And of all people, to be talking about how one uses the weight of his office to effectuate change, you're the last person that ought to be doing that. You know, I don't know if you folks read Tip O'Neill's book, All Politician is Local, but I read it many years ago. And I remember a piece or a chapter in that book that talked about the fact how people expect you, when you're an elected official, or a public official of any kind, they expect you to use the weight of your office to effectuate change. Now, me, back in 2015, I opted to use the weight of my office to try and fix a process that I didn't think went the way it was supposed to go. And I'm not here to relive that. There were people involved in that process. I was very candid, I was very open, I was very public with my comments. And the people with whom I may have had some disagreement, I'd say I've had 200 professional and pleasant conversations with over the course of the last year. I use the weight of my public office for things like the Town Manager's contract. God bless the manager. He's got to protect himself and his family. And when it comes to the Town Manager's contract, that's about the only time I can think of when the Selectmen aren't on the same team as the manager. Because we're trying to protect the interests of the town, the financial interests of the town, and the level of service to which we think the town is entitled. The Town Manager is trying to protect his own financial security and his family. That's understandable. If anybody, a year later, wants to try and take me to task for using the weight of my office so that the town didn't sign on to a contract, as you had negotiated, Mr. McCoy, for a year of compensation if somebody is terminated for cause, that's for cause. That's not if we just decided we wanted to move on, we wanted a different direction. But for cause, I was not willing to sign a contract with anybody for a year's severance if somebody is terminated for cause. And you nor anybody else should mistake that for some opposition to Mr. Hall's appointment or his contract. Believe me, if I didn't think he shouldn't have been appointed, I'd have spoken up and I wouldn't have waited a year to do it. You know, this whole idea of using the weight of your public office, you know, just, I don't know, two, three months ago, this poor guy comes in that's never been in Wilmington before looking for a common victual's license on Wall Street. You mistake the zoning history of the property and you spend 15 minutes hammering this guy. And he's saying, "I'm here to get a common victual's license on Wall Street." Why do I have to hear about zoning six years ago or eight years ago? But we've seen that routine before. You name the restaurant that comes in on Wall Street and he gets hammered. So that's how you use the weight of your office. You know, the difference, I think, the difference is that when you're using the weight of your office to effectuate change for the residents, that's called hardball. That's what people expect you to do from time to time. When you use the weight of your office to try and engage in patronage hires or to gain some competitive advantage or to realize a personal financial gain, that's just bullying. That's just bullying. So, you know, when I listen to you, Mr. McCoy, up in front of Town Meeting, you don't want to use the word threatening anymore. I think you used the word muscle. You know, I don't know what words you want to try and restrict me to. But what I know is that when I've served this Town of Wilmington for 20 years, any time that I used my political weight, to the extent I had any, I did it for the residents of Wilmington. Can you look me in the eye and tell me you did the same thing? You know, for the last 20 years, Mike Kyra, for the last four years, Mr. McCoy, as he said that we were the best Board he ever served with, likewise, for the last four years, has been riding Mike Kyra's coattails and anybody that would listen and any opportunity you had, you talk about what a good Town Manager he was and what a good working relationship he was. And, you know, back in the day, since you want to take us on this walk down memory lane tonight, I very specifically remember Mike Kyra playing a game of hardball once. I remember it very clearly. He was good at that. He played hardball with a water-in-sewer scuff law. And without the time or the resources associated with the trial, he got a million-dollar settlement, working with the Water and Sewer Superintendent and working with Town Council. The very next year, you, Mr. McCoy, voted to terminate his employment as the Manager of Wilmington based on the fact that you weren't involved in the million-dollar settlement. I've seen this time and time again. Something would have been timely a year ago, but you'll bring it up now because it's an election year. And I appreciate the restraint and the professionalism that your colleagues up there are showing because I've been in that same seat, where you just feel like, in the best interest of the town, I need to have a measured and restrained response. But as a resident of Wilmington, as a former member of that Board, I refuse to sit idly by while you try and sell me my reputation when I'm not even in the room to defend it. Won't happen. Thank you all for your time.
At this time, does anyone here on the Board have any comments? Okay, anybody here in the audience? Harry, none?
Madam Chair, could I make a comment?
Certainly.
I do stand by what I said when I served with you. And Lou Simogli, it was perhaps the best Board I've ever served. And I meant that, okay? We have to agree to disagree on issues, so be it. It happens. And as far as you talk about Mike Kyra, all right, who, per se, was one of the best Town Managers we ever had, let's go back, you want to go down memory lane, let's go back. And I don't put people's, just say Selectmen. I give names. When you had Selectmen Diane Allen, Selectmen Jerry Duggan, that wanted him gone, wanted him gone. Town Manager thought his job was on the line back, that he saw, I saw him and he said, "I control the cards because I just got elected." I said, "You're not going nowhere. You did a good job, I supported you. That investigation of the Water Department, he was right on." And he said, and I've got a great memory too, Mr. Newhouse, when he stated, but the difference with him, he did go after those two Selectmen and call it the way it was. He did say, "They were on a fishing expedition that came up with nothing." All right? No, we don't want to talk about that, but as far as the million dollars, you have no idea of what you're talking about, the million dollars. But if you want to go down memory lane, and I'll say it, and I'll say it, I know his brother's here. He was perhaps one of the best Town Managers we ever had. I supported him, you know that. He would have been gone a long time ago, considering who I am. Didn't do that. I looked in the mirror, I did the right thing and I voted for him and I supported. Did I vote against one of his contracts? Yes, I did. But when it really counted, whether he was going to be here or out on the street, I supported him. And it was another time when something like that happened again. So I voted for him. And if I voted the other way with the other two Selectmen, he would have been gone. I didn't do it, I did the right thing. You know, I have to look in the mirror, I can shave myself in the morning, I know who I am. And did I strain relationships because of that vote? Sure. Did it cost me? Absolutely. It cost me time and a liquor license for a couple of periods, a couple of years, because I did the right thing. As far as the gentlemen coming in here, I didn't go after him per se. When I had Mike Holland's senior partner come up to see me and I stated, I had nothing, an issue with the Council, Mr. Peterson, or that gentleman. I said, "Jeez, I wish I worked for you, I probably would have learned a lot more." My issue was with Holland, his senior partner. I said, "What's the guy with the hair cut down, what's his name?" I remember Mr. Peterson said, "Yeah, man, come to see me with all the open airs." I supported the doggy world, supported it. But, you know, you can put a wonderful spin on it because I own a restaurant. I didn't even vote for it or against it. I voted for every common eviction license in this community, every liquor license, every entertainment. As far as that, I even abstain. I even abstain. But I'll say it to you, Mike, it was perhaps, working with you and Lou and the Board was perhaps one of the most productive Boards I've ever worked with. And we can't agree and disagree from time to time and still not have that good Board? That's all. That's all.
On to those comments. I'll stand by my track record in agreeing to disagree, disagreeing on issues civilly. To hear you say, "I don't know what I'm talking about, the million dollars," you tell me. You tell me what that was all about. You, it was highly publicized, no, I didn't bring it up. It was highly publicized that you tried to terminate the Town Manager because he secured a million-dollar settlement without you. If you're telling me you didn't say that at the time, then I will just accept that and I will tell you, you're wrong, you're the one that doesn't know what he's talking about. I remember it very clearly.
We'll agree to disagree and leave it at that, okay?
That's fine.
That's what that is.
When you agree to disagree, you don't take potshots at people in a public forum after you've had every opportunity to have that discussion in front of people. And agreeing to disagree is not calling people's character into question. It's not accusing them of using some tactics that, when all is said and done, nobody confirms with what you're talking about and you just want to say, "Okay, we'll have to agree to disagree." I'm not going to let you get away with that.
And that's fine by me, but I'll tell you, that's exactly what happened to that room right to my left. And that's all I'm going to say. I made the comment, moving forward, fine, but I was there. That's all I'm going to say.
The fact that you're there and you have a meeting with other people and the two Selectmen that you're saying said it, they weren't even in the room.
No, I'm talking about me with the Town Manager in the air.
Correct.
It was just myself and Mr. Shampoo, not two Selectmen.
So the three of you were in the room and two say that it didn't happen and you're saying that it does. And, you know, I don't even want to give any shrift to what you're saying, but, you know, it's been clear, you've just admitted that throughout the history of your tenure here as a Selectman, that you've taken issues with prior Town Managers and have potentially had issues with their employment. So we didn't even go down that road with this current Town Manager, but you did. And yet, if we wanted to go down that road, you take issue with it? So the hypocrisy that you bring forward is just so, so revealing. I don't know why you specifically are targeting me specifically and Mr. Newhouse. I don't know why you think that we're kicking up dust. You're the one that's kicking up the dust. And if I have a performance issue that I want to have a private one-on-one with the Town Manager and do that, what is wrong with that? I mean, I don't see how that is a foul on the play. I don't see how that is not appropriate. So what is the point, Michael, of saying that we threatened the Town Manager if we had a conversation? You're sensationalizing these conversations and trying to make drama and discourse and divide this Board and try and make it a media spectacle. And I really want to get at the root cause. I'm going to look you in the eyes and I want to know what your problem is. What is your problem?
I know exactly what was said in that room.
It doesn't matter what was said, but what is the issue?
But the bottom line is...
If I had an issue with the Town Manager, why is that a concern to you?
It's not a concern, no.
I didn't ask you to support me in not having the Town Manager reappointed. I didn't ask Selectman Shampoo, I didn't ask Selectman Newhouse. If I had a candid conversation one-on-one with the Town Manager, why is that a problem?
I don't have a problem with one-on-one, you talking to the manager.
So what is your root cause? What is your root issue? Is it that you're in a reelection year? Is that what it is?
I mean, in a reelection year...
I mean, look me in the eyes and tell me what your real problem is.
There is no real problem. When somebody comes, let me think, can I say something now?
Yeah, I really want to know. Because I don't want to do this again.
When somebody looks in the eye and says, "I'm looking for eight more months compensation under the category termination," that tells me something.
What does it tell you?
What does that tell me? That a man is not too secure with his job. And if you, you know, and we talk about... And if you, you know, and we talk about going down memory.
You inferred that.
Who would?
So, he's at a bargaining table. He's going to ask for everything. Why wouldn't he?
Eight months, that's the first time in history and I've served on the board for 20 years.
So, explain to me why you were okay with giving it to him. You would have supported that. You were going to vote for that. So, why would you have voted for that? You were going to give him that.
I didn't want to give him the eight additional months. Why, you know, you want to turn this around. I didn't do that.
No, I'm asking you the question.
No, I didn't vote to give him the eight additional months. That wasn't even presented to the full membership when the time came. And you're aware of that and you know that.
Okay, so.
Yeah, you know?
So, what's the issue with that?
You're beating the drum on this, I'm not. So, what's the issue? Why would somebody ask for 32 more weeks' pay if everything was wonderful and fantastic? I've served on this board for, like, going on close to 30 years and I've negotiated with town managers in the history I've done with three managers, Buzz Stepchinsky, Michael Kyra, and Jeff. Not one at any time ever asked for four-year compensation under the term of termination, period. And let people come to their own conclusions.
Because they asked for it, doesn't mean that someone wronged them.
Well, you don't, if you're going to ask for more money, you're going to ask more pay or vacation. You're not going to ask for 32 weeks.
You can't take that, Michael, without credible facts to say.
But you know something, I said that earlier. I don't need to beat that.
Did you ever hear me threaten the town manager? Did you ever hear me threaten Jeff? Did you ever hear me threaten the town manager?
He said that.
He said that? Okay.
Okay. But we can go back to the words. The bottom line is, nobody is going to ask for 32 more weeks' compensation under their contract if everything is hunky-dory and fantastic, unless there has been some issue relative. And that's all.
We've admitted that we've had discussions, so I just.
That's right. But why would somebody want 32 more weeks' compensation if there wasn't a huge issue? You're saying, "Well, you know, we had a couple of words, but we never threatened." Get that word out of the equation. Absolutely. Nobody is going to ask for a four-year severance where the norm has been always four months. And that's the history of three town managers I've worked. But, you know, I've said it. I don't need to repeat it, you know, and I don't know what else I can say.
Yes.
This is a point of information. Five years ago, when we negotiated the last contract with the former manager, we gave him a sizable raise because in the end, that sizable raise was less money than we would have to pay if he took an early retirement. And that election cycle, in order to cause division and in order to have an election issue, Mr. McCoy gravitated to the fact that we had paid the former town manager too much. It didn't matter that it would have cost us more to let him retire a year earlier. We paid him too much. So, you don't remember the million dollar deal that was the basis for trying to terminate the guy?
I remember this one, Michael.
Do you at least remember the raise?
Oh, yeah, definitely.
It was less than, we would have had to pay him if he retired and how you made that your election year.
I don't know if it would be less if he retired, but the bottom line is.
If you're there for the meaning, you would know that it would have been.
Can I say something? Is that, Madam Chair, could I say something?
Absolutely.
The way I look at it, when negotiating deals with town employees, give them 2%. I couldn't see us giving the town manager four to five times that amount. Plain and simple, okay? So, that's that.
Well, this is.
2%.
This is.
Town employees.
Yeah, or pay the guy more to leave. But that's, you know, that takes a little bit too much thought. That takes a little bit too much candor. It doesn't make for great campaign literature, but division does. Trying to divide people who work together professionally and pleasantly, trying to divide them makes for great campaign literature. And that's what this is all about. Make no mistake about it.
You and the chairman just stated a moment ago that, hey, they can ask for anything they want. Doesn't mean they're going to get it.
Would anyone in this room like to say anything else before we put this matter to a close?
I would.
Yes.
If I could. Mr. McCoy, every three years, it feels like you try to, you work towards painting yourself as the contrarian or the outsider on this board. And it's always, it always those, every three years it coincides with election, your election year. We all know that in the spring of 2017, you will be, your seat will be up and I presume that you'll pull papers and run. A couple of weeks ago, you had indicated that you believed that the discussions about the finance committee appointments back in spring of 2015 were a dog and pony show. And I adamantly said then, and I say again now, that they were not a dog and pony show. They were a necessary, if not painful at times and uncomfortable, but a necessary conversation that needed to take place to right a wrong. What's happening here tonight is, because of you, a dog and pony show. And it's a dog and pony show for your political ends and your political gains. And you may debate that with me. At the end of the day, that's how I feel and I believe that to my core. I'm going to ask you, and you can look into my ear, because frankly, I'm not going to look into your eyes.
Look into your eyes.
Thanks. I want to ask you to commit to keeping politics out of this board. When we're here to do the town's business, keep the politics off of this board. You want to run for reelection in 2017? Have at it. Use the press. Use all the media outlets that are available to you. Hold signs. Get your campaign staff together. Do whatever it is you need to do. When you walk into this board and we start engaging in the town's business, please, please refrain from engaging in politics. Because this discussion tonight is politics. And the reason I know that is because you had a year to bring up all these concerns that you have brought up since town meeting last week and again this week with regards to the town manager contract, with regards to the finance committee appointment, with regards to Article 41. All of this stuff, you had ample opportunity in a non-election year to bring up and you didn't have, you could not have been bothered to bring it up. When did you bring it up? When it was time to bring it up. So, you would look like the contrarian and the one single voice of opposition amongst the rest of the board. I find that demeanor reprehensible. It's just, it's not the way I roll and I'm asking you. If you're going to do that, do it privately. Do it with the press. Don't do it here at our meetings, please. This is not where we do politics. This is where we do government. That's what I would ask you to commit to.
Just respond if I could.
Go ahead.
I'll look at you, Mr. Shampoo. I don't need to look in your ear. The bottom line is, sitting up here, sitting up here, it is politics. When you run for a seat, it is political. It is politics. And I'm willing to work with anybody and I'm happy to work with the two new members on behalf of the community. I'm willing to work with anybody as long as they have the best interests at heart. I believe I do have the best interests of this community at heart. But if you were to look at me and say, well, almost like you want me to sign an agreement, being, sitting up here, it is politics. It is. And if you don't think that for a moment, why are you even sitting up here? Okay? I'm here sitting up to try to help constituents like you and everyone else. You know, we all live in the same town. I understand that. But if I think for a moment that it's not politics, it is politics.
Bringing up resurrecting issues from a year ago or five years ago or from 1984, when that kid, when that guy that was here for the victualize license was 14 years old, that's politics. And that's not necessary. That's not how to govern. Maybe it is in your mind, so we just have a difference of approach. I would say that it's just ironic that you choose to become political in the way that you conduct yourself at our meetings, once every three years. The rest of the other years, you just kind of roll with the punches, roll with the flow. And that's, I could keep on going. I'm not going to because I frankly, I consider myself above it. So, I'm going to shut up now.
Madam Chair, I'm just going to say, anybody can see that tape when the gentleman, Mr. Peterson, was here and I was emphatic. My issue's not with those two gentlemen. It was with Mike Holland. It was with Mike Holland, his senior partner, trying to sell the town this. It was with him. So, if you look at the tape, I said it again and again. I never voted against anyone's convict. I never voted against their liquor license. I never voted against their entertainment. And the first time in the history, you know, all these years, I abstained from that vote. All right? It was with the owner, not with the attorney and not with the person.
What does this have to do with the.
I'm just responding.
No.
I'm just responding to what Mike Shampoo said.
I understand.
And that's it. That's it.
I don't understand the relevance of this whole thing and what you're trying to get across, what point you're trying to make. It just doesn't make sense. And I'm certainly not here to defend my brother. But his name was mentioned a few times and everything he did for this town for 22 years, he did with his heart and soul and he did it with the best interests of the residents in mind. And I wish he were here tonight to respond to some of the comments that were made.
And I can say, I totally agree with you. Your brother, your brother was perhaps the best town manager. And I would hope to think if he was here, he would say, "Yeah, there was a coup d'etat against me, Diane Allen, Jerry Duggan. If it wasn't for McCoy, he would have been out." He knows that. And I supported him. I supported your brother. Because I believed in him and he was right on with, relative to what was going on at the water department. And that's what I did. And I would hope to think that's exactly what he would have said.
I think.
Because I think so. But, you know, I'm not, we're going to, everybody wants to go down memory lane. I know I can go further because I've been around a lot longer. You know, but I'm willing to work with you, Kevin. I'm willing to work with Greg, the chairperson, Mike Shampoo, you know. I'm willing to work with anybody. You know, what was said was said and that was that. You know, so people can come to their own conclusions.
Mr. Newhouse.
Yeah, I, again, you know, sit here and I hear comments about people who served ages ago, who aren't here to defend themselves. I again hear Mr. McCoy talking about how he was so tight with the town manager. I think, I wish the former town manager were here as well. Because, you know, when people start accusing anybody of throwing their weight around, my point is that you're the last person that ought to be making that accusation. That's my point. And, you know, I wish the former manager was here as well so that somebody could just put it to him, you know? In the last 25 years of service, was there anybody who tried to use their position to threaten you? Or if threaten is not part of the vocabulary, then to engage in patronage politics or to try and get some competitive advantage? I think that question should be asked of the former town manager. I think the question should be asked of the former superintendent. I think that question should be asked of the Board of Appeals members. I think that question should be asked of the former health director. Because as I sit here and I have to defend myself and go through this dog and pony show as somebody has described it, for trying to use my influence, for trying to flex muscle or for trying to threaten, whatever words you want to use, don't take my word for it. Go ask everybody else who's dealt with Mr. McCoy for the previous 25 years. Ask them if anybody ever did that with them.
Hey, Madam Chair, all I'm going to say is, Tippel Hill also had saying, Mr. Newhouse, politics is local. I guess you don't remember that one, though.
Actually, I started with that, if you were listening. That's what I started with.
Politics is local.
Thank you.
Mr. Shampoo as well.
Anything else?
Madam Chair, I just want to interject. I just want to say that obviously, with all due respect to my colleagues on the board, I ran for the board to help volunteer, to help the residents as others did. And I just don't see how this is helping anybody here tonight. So, I'm looking forward to moving on and getting down to some business, helping the residents.
Thank you. Anything further out in the audience? Okay. This time we can move into communications. Thank you.
Madam Chair, we received a letter late on Friday, correspondence from the Surface Transportation Board. You'll recall that for a number of months now, they've been considering whether to grant the New England Trans-Rails request to defer, to lift the deferral on the environmental review. In fact, their decision that was provided to us, in fact, was made on May 12th. They have agreed to lift the deferral, which is certainly not good news for the town. It appears, based upon the content in the decision, that it was largely due to the Environmental Protection Agency's November 6th letter to the Surface Transportation Board's Office of Environmental Analysis, stating that they no longer could support the deferral. So, what this means essentially is that New England Trans-Rail has 90 days from the date of the STB decision to file an updated petition for exemption. And the one silver lining, I guess if you could call it that, is that the Surface Transportation Board is requiring that NET engage an environmental impact statement as opposed to a environmental assessment. The impact statement is a more detailed analysis. So, in the meantime, we are certainly, I've had conversations with the town council about this and we will be prepared to, when NET does file their petition, we will certainly be prepared to address that and offer comment as appropriate. Clearly, the town's position remains the same, that the fact that we have this 21E site, we have not, or Olin has not fully characterized it, even to the point of identifying the alternatives for remediation, that has not occurred yet. We still believe it's premature. But with all that being said, we will respond accordingly.
Madam Chair, may I ask a question of Jeff? Jeff, and forgive me if I've asked this question or if I should know this answer. Surface Transportation Board is a federal agency, is that correct?
Yes.
Have we engaged with Representative Moulton's office on this particular issue in the past? Or perhaps should we again if we have? Could he potentially be an advocate on the behalf?
Oh, absolutely. I would expect that we will be engaging with Congressman Moulton's office as well as our Senate senators.
Thank you. I mean, whatever weight we have at the federal level with our representation, I think if they're not aware of this, their respective offices ought to be engaged in this. Because I feel like this is starting to gain some legs and not the right kind. So, thank you. I appreciate it.
Next, under correspondence is a memo to the board regarding a follow-up on the dog park rules and regulations. You'll recall at the last meeting, the recreation director and myself, as well as the animal control officer, were seeking to have the board adopt rules and regulations for the dog park that is being finalized as we speak. There was a question that came up about the authority to issue fines. I went back and reviewed the law and also consulted with town council. And in fact, there is in Chapter 5, Section 54 of the inhabitant bylaws, provision for $50 fine for failure to follow the regulations. So, that would be in place. And as I note in my memo, clearly, the intent of the animal control officer Animal Control Officer is to try to educate, uh, reinforce the idea that, uh, dog owners need to be responsible when they're using the facility. Uh, if that does not, uh, work, then there would be, uh, my expectation of warnings, and then if all else fails, a fine, so we're certainly not, you, looking to use that vehicle as the first measure.
Jeff, I'm sorry, if I may, and, uh, go ahead, sorry, apologize.
Uh, the, the other point I would just make is, uh, with regard to the regulations themselves, uh, you were provided at the previous meeting with a, a list of the regulations, there, there are two modifications, uh, to the rules and regulations, uh, one of the items, um, was raised by, uh, town council, and that is to be more explicit about the area, uh, fenced-in area that is specifically for the smaller dogs. So you'll note, under the reference to dogs, that last bullet point must have a shoulder height of 18 inches or less to be in the small, uh, dog area, so this is intended to be very clear as to the dogs that can be located within the fenced area, intended for the smaller dogs. The other point that we also wanted to make amply clear is that this is a carry-in, carry-out area, so there's a reference here, you'll see, there's, this is a carry-in, carry-out policy in effect for trash and dog waste, so those are the only two changes that have been made to the document.
So I know we have a board to consider further down, but I just wanted to ask this question now, and I know that we had talked about it previously, um, the intent is, my understanding would be that once we get the rules officially approved, that there would be signage down there, um, the dog park right now is not officially open, um, I do know that some residents have been going down there, I know on some social media sites has been some commentary, um, regarding people starting to use it, and I also understand that there's a lock there now as of today.
Right.
At a future date, I'm assuming that there's going to be some more, um, meteor releases, you know, from town hall relative to the dog park opening, and these would be put on the town website at some point in some capacities, would that be fair to say?
Uh, yes, there, uh, in fact, we are in the, uh, planning stages of a ribbon cutting, if you will, um, the Public Works is finalizing, uh, the work on the park itself, I think it's, it should be ready to go relatively quickly, and I would anticipate, uh, sometime in the middle of June, we would actually have, uh, the ribbon cutting, but we will certainly, uh, provide that date as, as soon as we, uh, have a confirmation on when the park will be done. But prior to the ribbon cutting, we would have, uh, the various signage up that addresses both the regulations and, uh, the designated areas of, uh, for the dogs.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, correspondence from the town accountant, just advising the board about, uh, funding we received from FEMA. Uh, this is for the, uh, is re- a partial reimbursement for the storm, snowstorm that occurred during the period of January 26th through the 28th of 2015. Uh, the town received 109,781 dollars and 21 cents, uh, as, as a consequence of, uh, there was a series of storms, as you'll recall, the governor was, uh, pursuing a, a larger, uh, sum covering a larger, uh, span of time, ultimately, uh, FEMA restricted the timeframe, uh, there was a series of, uh, documents that were, uh, provided by various departments, including Public Works, police, fire, and public buildings, and ultimately, that led to the, uh, reimbursement. Uh, next is a letter from Scott Grant, he requested that this be presented to the board, so I'll just read it verbatim. Uh, "Dear members of the board, I wish to extend my appreciation to the board for presenting me with the Paul Revere Bowl during the annual Wilmington Good Guy Ceremony on May 13, 2016. I am honored and humbled to have na- been named this year's recipient by the Good Guy Committee. I also wish to thank, uh, chairperson Judy O'Connell and town manager Jeff Hull for their presentations during the event and for joining Selectman Mike Shampoo and sharing the evening with my family and me. Wilmington is blessed to have many residents who volunteer their time to make this a wonderful community. I am truly grateful to have been chosen this year, uh, when so many are deserving of the honor. Uh, very, truly yours, Scott Grant." Next, under correspondence, uh, is a MMA, Mass Municipal Association bulletin, uh, apprising the town and the board of legislation, uh, Senate Bill 2144, uh, that is intended to overhaul zoning. Uh, this discussion has been going on for at least 10 years or so, uh, there are multiple interest groups that are, um, clearly interested in this, and in some cases, trying to minimize any changes that occur, uh, weaken the bill essentially, uh, but it is before, uh, the Senate will be, there'll be a vote shortly, uh, I've asked Valerie Gingrich to review the implications for the town, and we will be, um, uh, once we assess the implications, we will, um, uh, let, make the board aware of those. Uh, next is, uh, also an MMA bulletin, uh, regarding the state budget. Uh, this is, uh, the Senate's, uh, announces their version, 39.9 billion dollar fiscal 2017, uh, budget, uh, and there are various highlights, essentially, from Wilmington's standpoint, uh, their budget, uh, provides for a local aid in the amount of just over 14 million dollars, 14 million, 358 dollars to be exact, uh, which is about 214 dol- 214,358 dollars over the, uh, projected, uh, local aid, uh, amount that we had budgeted in fiscal 17, uh, so that's certainly good news. Uh, the next step will be, uh, for a, a conference committee, uh, to, uh, meet Senate and House to, uh, work out the details. I would just note that the increase, uh, there is an increase in, uh, Chapter 70, which is the education aid, uh, over the amount that, uh, the governor recommended, uh, there was also an increase of about 100,000 dollars, uh, in the Senate's version for the unrestricted general government aid, which is the, uh, aid that, um, non- for non-school accounts. A slight increase in veterans' benefits, about 6000, 6800 dollars. Uh, the overall increase that the Senate is recommending is a 3.5 percent. Uh, the one downside, if you will, is that, um, the Senate's version, uh, cuts the kindergarten development grants by 89 percent. Uh, the governor and the House was recommending, both rep- recommending a level funding, uh, at 8 po- 18.6 million dollars. Uh, the, uh, Senate version cuts the grant amount by, uh, 16.6 million dollars. Uh, you will recall that the Wilmington School Department, uh, last year received 111,000 dollars. Uh, if this cut prevails, it would dramatically reduce it to somewhere in the neighborhood of 12,000 dollars, so, uh, I have not had an opportunity to talk to Mary Delai about this, but I would expect there'll be conversations with our legislative delegation.
Jeff, to that point, um, in doing so and speaking with, uh, the superintendent, if you feel that there's any need to, um, provide a supporting letter from this board, could we seek to do that? Does anyone here on this board have any issues with, with offering to do that, that, you know, if we, aside from our state delegation, that if we as a board could further, and we, I believe that we've done this in the past for other school-related initiatives, that we wanted to support, you know, our school endeavors, uh, for what it's worth, putting in a letter from our Board of Selectmen? I mean, to me, this is, especially with, um, you know, early childhood development, with special education needs, with all of the work that they're doing with park and all the other, uh, curriculum changes and, uh, STEM and, and just, I, the list goes on, um, to, to go right at the core of when, when they get right out the gate, just kind of seems like we're, um, taking some steps backwards, so if anyone, um, has any objection to that, please speak now, but if it makes sense to write a letter at any point, I would, I would say please proceed to do that.
No problem with that, that makes sense.
Thank you.
The final item under correspondence is, uh, just a programming change from Verizon. Uh, they note that, uh, on, after May 26th of 2016, the FX, uh, WFXT Movies Program, uh, Channel 490 will be replaced with Escape, which is apparently a new offering.
Okay, at this point, we'll move into the board to consider items, please, item number six.
Uh, first item, uh, board to consider, a request from Kim Gold, uh, Director of Christian Education and Youth Coordinator for the Wilmington Methodist Church. She was seeking to use the town park for a community walk, but has since withdrawn that request, no action is required. Uh, next is, uh, the, uh, board to consider ratification of, uh, my appointment of Carol Hilbinger to the Wilmington, uh, Commission on Disabilities. Uh, as you recall, uh, at, I believe it was the last meeting, there were a number of appointments to, uh, positions, uh, there are several vacancies on the, uh, Commission on Disabilities, and, uh, so, um, we've been, um, providing, uh, notice about some of these, uh, vacancies. Uh, Ms. Hilbinger came forward, uh, she, uh, had a conversation, uh, with Dee Janetti, who is the chair of the committee, uh, and Dee has recommend, has recommended her, and I've, uh, appointed her subject to the board's, uh, ratification.
Hearing none, any questions, comments, or motion?
I, yes, certainly, I, I would like to move that we, uh, ratify the town manager's appointment of Carol Hilbinger to the Wilmington Commission on Disabilities, and, uh, at the conclusion of that vote, assuming it passes, I'd, I would ask the manager, um, convey, uh, a letter of thanks on behalf of the Board of Selectmen, uh, for her volunteerism and for stepping into this role.
Second?
Any motions being made, seconded, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Okay, thank you.
Uh, next, under the board to consider, uh, is the adopting of the rules and regulations relative to the dog park, uh, as we previously discussed.
Any questions, comments, or motion?
Madam Chair, make a motion to, uh, make a motion in favor of, uh, as described by, but, the town manager relative to the, uh, dog park located at Town Park.
Motion's been made, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion's been made, seconded, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Yes.
Okay, unanimous, thank you.
Madam Chair, if I could, uh...
Yes.
Some, uh, residents have showed in expression, they really like this idea of the, uh, dog park up there, they think it's wonderful, and obviously, these are good people, and obviously, they're gonna take care of the animals, like, we, we hope they will, so a lot of folks are excited by this, and I think it's a very good thing.
Excellent, thank you. So the next item is the board to consider the summer meeting schedule, and, uh, the agenda went out with some proposed dates of July 11th and August 15th. I wanted to inquire with the board if it would be possible to, um, look at the July 11th date and see if, um, July 18th might be an option, uh, for people.
That would work for me.
That's fine. I'll be totally honest, I'm not gonna be around that particular week.
Okay.
But if you need to have the 18th, you're not gonna have a issue with me, if that's, you know, the board feels that way, that's fine.
Do you have any issues at all, Matt?
I'm around, either, doesn't matter.
Are you okay with the board proceeding without you in that?
That's fine, I just, I'm not gonna be 18th, I won't be here on the 18th.
Do you know if you have any schedule conflicts at all, Jeff?
Uh, I don't believe so, let me just quickly check, magic. I won't be here that week, I'm taking my wonderful wife away for her 50th, uh, birthday, so...
Oh, that's great.
Yeah, I'm, no, I'm, I'm good.
You okay?
That's fine.
So everyone okay with the 18th?
Okay, fine, I just...
So is everyone okay with the August 15th?
Yes.
Okay, so July 18th and August 15th will be the dates. Okay, thank you. And public comments? Seeing none. Moving on to new business and committee reports, I will start to my left, please.
Uh, I only have one, and that is, and it's not coming up, um, just before leaving my house this evening, um, I saw on social media that the, um, forgive me here, let me bring it up. It literally just came out, so Jeff may not even have received it yet, um, but a few weeks ago, we got the good news, that Tennessee Gas Pipeline had suspended their application to, uh, to FERC, and, uh, for the pipeline with the lateral that would potentially go through Wilmington. Uh, they have now officially, as of this afternoon, um, uh, pulled it, uh, removed it, I'm trying to think of the word they used here, withdrawn, they have completely, formally withdrawn their application, so we had a, uh, hopeful, optimistic, or, uh, tentatively optimistic view of it a couple of weeks ago, when they put it in suspension, I think we can take a deep breath and, uh, feel a sense of relief that, uh, at least from our perspective, Wilmington's perspective, uh, that pipeline will not affect us. What happens with Spectra and elsewhere, who knows, but, um, that's good news, and I, I think you probably have an email in your inbox, if it's, uh, if, uh, potentially, and I'm sure you'll see it tomorrow, but I wanted to kind of jump out ahead of it and let folks know.
He, he has it right here.
Oh, is that right? Sorry, I stole your thunder there, Jeff.
Uh, that's, it's fine with me. Uh, yeah, we did receive correspondence, uh, today, from Kimberly Bowes, Secretary from, uh, Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, reads as follows, "On November 20, 2015, Tennessee Gas Pipeline Company, uh, filed with the Federal, uh, Energy Regulatory Commission a certificate application, uh, in the above referenced docket for the Northeast Energy Direct Project. On April 22nd, 2016, Tennessee Gas submitted a letter to the Commission requesting the Commission not take any further action, uh, in processing the application pending Tennessee submitting a status report to the Commission, uh, no later than May 26, 2016. The April 22nd, 2016, letter was filed following Kinder Morgan Inc., Tennessee Gas Parrot Company, announcing on April 20, 2016, that the company would suspend further work and expenditures on the project as a result of inadequate capacity commitments from prospective customers and a determination that the project is uneconomic. Pursuant to Rule, uh, 216A of the Commission's Rules of Practice and Procedure, uh, 18 CFR 385.216A, uh, 2015, Tennessee provides notice of its withdrawal of the application in the proceedings. Tennessee appreciates the Commission staff's diligent efforts in the project during both the pre-filing and certificate review processes. In accordance with the Commission's filing requirements, Tennessee is submitting the filing with the Commission's Secretary through the e-filing system, and is providing a copy of the filing in the Office of Energy Projects and to all parties on the official service list for the proceedings." Uh, it's signed, uh, Jay Curtis Moffett, Deputy General Counsel and Vice President, uh, Legal Group.
Great, thank you. So, Mr. Shampoo, did you have anything further?
Uh, you know, I, I said that was the only thing, and I lied. Uh, Memorial Day, uh, Jeff's gonna go through important dates in a moment, but, uh, on May 30th, this coming Monday, uh, we have the opportunity to take a nice walk together down the, the roads of Wilmington, and I'm very excited to do that, I'm looking forward to seeing, uh, all our neighbors of Wilmington out on a beautiful day, so I, I hope it'll be well attended, not only the parade, but also the ceremonies at, uh, at the cemetery after, so, uh, look forward to that, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Selectman McCoy.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair, now, just to elaborate with, uh, Mr. Shampoo stated about Tennessee gas line, it's, I think that's great news for the community, but once again, we need to stay tuned, because we all thought New England Trans Rail was gonna go away, and they came back, so right now, they're doing it for economic reasons, but when things turn around, those are two words, stay tuned, they'll be back, you know, for the time being, obviously, let's wait till after these presidential elections, and they'll get to see how things are gonna turn a little bit different, that's all, so, I, I applaud, uh, the efforts of, uh, what they did relative to, uh, Tennessee gas line, but just, we gotta just keep our eye on it, plan it simple, thank you.
Okay, thank you, over to my right, please.
Okay. Looking forward to seeing everybody at the parade.
Great, and I don't have anything this evening. So moving on to important dates, please.
Uh, important dates, May 30, as noted, Memorial Day Parade, uh, begins at 10:00 AM, uh, leading off from Market Basket, will proceed down, uh, 38th to, uh, Church Street and, uh, end at the, uh, Wildwood Cemetery, the services there begin at 11:00. Town offices are closed on May 30th. Uh, June 3rd and 4th, Council for the Arts, 36th Annual Arts Exhibit, Friday, 7:00 PM to 9:00 PM, Saturday, noon to 4:00 PM. June 4th is a fishing derby, Town Beach, 9:00 AM to noon. Uh, June 5th, Wilmington High School graduation, June 9th, Shawshin Tech graduation, June 10th Rotary Trivia Night, Shriners Auditorium at 7:00 PM. June 11th, the town-wide yard sale, 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Uh, June 11th, Town Beach opens, uh, June 12th, Farmer's Market, Town Common, uh, 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM, and that'll continue, as you know, throughout the summer into the fall, uh, on, uh, those successive Sundays, with the exception of, uh, July 4th weekend. Uh, July, uh, June 12th, Hardin Tavern Open House, 4:30, uh, Salem Street, 2:00 PM to 4:00 PM. Next Selectman's meeting is June 13th, uh, and the Facilities Master Plan Committee, it was, you recall, originally scheduled for May 24th, uh, we've had to reschedule it to June 16th, here in Room 9 at 6:30 PM.
Okay, that brings our meeting to a close, would anyone like to make a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion's been made, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Yes.
Unanimous.